Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this special meeting of the Englewood Cliffs Mayor and Council. Today is February 27, 2019 at 7:03 PM. I call the meeting to order. Madam Clark, may I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Krajnacki?
Here.
Councilperson Woo. He did say to me that he wasn't attending this meeting.
Okay, thank you.
He was not available. Sung?
Here.
Sabari? Park? Aversa?
Excuse me, I'm here.
Councilman Aversa?
I'm here.
Oh? Here. Borough Attorney?
Here but late.
Borough Clerk? Everyone's present, Mayor, except Councilwoman Park and Councilman Woo.
Okay, thank you. Let's start this meeting the way we always start meetings, with the flag salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clark, would you please read into the record the Open Public Meetings Act statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting was legally given to the press and posted as required. Date and time of this meeting was legally given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. Its notices are filed with the Municipal Clerk and posted on the bulletin board. Minutes of this meeting will be made available to the public upon the completion of typing and proofreading by the Municipal Clerk.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to open the meeting to the public, please?
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
Does anyone from the public who wishes to speak, please raise your hand. Let me recognize you, come up to the microphone here, and feel free to speak on whatever you want. Yes.
The public has a floor.
What would you like?
Donnis Morfes is 26th Councilman.
Mr. Morfes, hold on a second.
I'd like to ask the Borough Administrator to keep the clock so I don't have to remember the recommendations for right or wrong.
Yeah, you look pretty silly doing that, but if you want to do that...
I still do, but not Friday.
Would you like to do it?
Sure. I can get my thing.
All right, go ahead.
Mr. Lynch, I'd like to thank you for a job well done Friday. I heard it was terrific. Mr. Mayor, I want to bring up something about fake news or false narratives. I think you claimed that you heard all the tapes. I was reading in the newspaper that Acting Chief, or Acting Captain, or Acting whatever he is, Hill, seemed to agree with the rest of the other people on the tapes. I don't know if you heard all the tapes. And listening to the tapes, I think Mr. Woo owes an apology to the police officer because there was nothing disparaging on the tape.
No idea what you're talking about?
No, no. They called him something derogatory in Chinese.
You're okay with that?
I'm not okay with that. I don't see it on the tape. If it's on the tape, can you tell me what tape it was on?
You're not going to see it on the tape, you're going to hear it on the tape.
Well, I don't hear it. Can you tell me which tape it was on?
Off the top of my head, no, but...
Because you didn't even check to see where Hill... It was in the newspapers. Hill said something very nice about you.
That's okay.
All right. Anyway, I'd like to thank Ms. Geiger, who did pro se and went to court to fight for our rights about 800 Sylvan. And, to be honest with you, it was disparaging to see that the judge turned around and said that the panel, our planning board, was arbitrary, unreasonable, and capricious. And I think if we would have given 800 Sylvan the variance with some restrictions, we wouldn't be sitting here today looking at, I don't know how many units.
That judge has been wrong before, and the decision should be appealed.
I think, I think, I think the judge actually put the dots together.
We'll see what the appellate court says.
We shall see. Thank you.
Yes.
Lauren Eastwood, Four Wheeler Drive. I see that Fifth Street is on the agenda tonight. For those in the public who are not familiar with Fifth Street, it is Englewood Cliffs' one and only dirt road. We have an ordinance that says you're not supposed to build on a dirt road without council permission. Yet somehow Carl Zimotor, a former Democratic Council candidate and a client or former client of Council President O's, managed to get building permits for Fifth Street without coming to the council. Now we have residents who are upset because they don't want to live on a dirt road even though the purchase price of their homes reflected the fact that they were living on a dirt road. I certainly don't expect to be paying any of the cost of fixing Carl Zimotor's boondoo. I expect that if Fifth Street is paved, paved, it will be paid for through an assessment on the abutting property owners, including former Democratic Council candidate Michael Kochnover. No one else in Englewood Cliffs is going to benefit from paving Fifth Street. It's a dead-end street that ends in Fort Lee and has no connection, physical connection, to Englewood Cliffs. And there is absolutely no reason that the rest of us, whose house prices were higher because we were paying to be on a paved street and we were paying the builder, or the previous homeowner paid the builder, for the paving of the street, why we should be paying any of the costs of paving Fifth Street. The people who benefit from the paving, the residents and business owners abutting Fifth Street, should be paying the entire cost of paving Fifth Street.
Thank you. Just to make it clear to the public, and to the gentleman sitting here who raised the issue last meeting, this happened before my tenure as mayor. I thought it was terribly wrong that new houses were being built on an unpaved street, unimproved street. And there were clearly different sets of rules for Democrats and Republicans back then. And that's one of the messes that I have to clean up. I thought we were on the right track to doing that. I asked the Borough Administrator, sitting next to me in a capacity as Borough Clerk tonight, to provide us with a report on that street. Late this afternoon, I did receive the report on the status and the history of what had happened. So I reviewed it briefly this evening, and I know that the gentleman who asked questions about it last meeting is here, and I wanted to have some feedback for you, sir, but also ask this council to read the report that the Administrator put together and come up with a solution. I realize that, other than perhaps Gloria and Ed, who are on this council right now, they were on the council back then also, so I think in particular, the two of you should put your heads together and figure out a solution.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
Yeah.
You're getting false narratives.
Well, that's...
What does that mean?
No, that gentleman back there.
Peter?
You asked about this, didn't you?
No.
No, somebody else asked about it. All right, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. All right. No, that's okay. That's okay. That's okay. Are you saying you were not on the council back then? You were not on the council back then? Because you and Gloria, and this was Gloria's client, actually, who built these houses.
He built a house?
He built these houses, and she was his lawyer when he, she was on council.
You don't know what you're talking about. No, it's all there.
So, the facts are, and the facts are, that this street is unpaved.
Yeah.
I was not responsible for that.
After that.
Ed and Gloria were on the council then.
Yeah.
So for everyone watching this at home, conclude for yourselves. Please complain.
We're sending out all the decisions on Friday, and let them go to other places.
So basically, Mayor, you're saying that you're in favor of charging every homeowner?
No, that's not what I said. That's not what I said. I actually said I want you to figure out a solution. So sure, I want to figure out the way to make this pattern happen in the first place.
Every homeowner who pays...
No, I didn't say that. I didn't say that. So stop lying, Councilman Aversa. I didn't say that. I said figure out a solution. I said figure out a solution.
Are you going to continue?
I said figure out a solution. Well, if you're going to tell lies, I'm going to talk over you.
I have a solution, if you'd like.
What's your solution?
Solution is get this street paved.
Right. How do you want to do that, Councilman?
Can I finish, or you got to...
How do you want to do that?
Why?
How do you want to do that, Councilman?
Would you like to hear it, or you want to...
Tell me.
Okay. So just like every other street in our town gets paved, that street should be paved.
Okay.
And because every, every resident...
Do you think Carl Zimotor should pay for it?
He's already contributed.
So how do you want to pay for it?
So every homeowner in this town benefits from every street that gets paved, am I not correct?
I don't know if that's correct.
Because then you're telling me what that woman said that came up here...
Who's that woman?
I don't know who she was. A resident.
What's her name?
She's saying that every person that benefits from the street being paved should pay.
Listen, the council has to solve this problem.
I'm solving it. I'm telling you right now.
So take a vote.
We don't need to do it tonight.
Go ahead.
You're telling me this research, you're telling me this whole situation...
It is on the agenda, actually. Mr. Sabari, it's on the agenda. You don't want to hear...
Mayor, perhaps, perhaps...
It's on the agenda.
Perhaps, the planning board currently has something in front of them where somebody wants to build. Perhaps that...
I don't know.
...could in fact pave that street.
Perhaps, but you're making up stories.
Perhaps. So why don't we just put this on hold?
What are you talking about? Do you know something I don't know?
What are you talking...
First you said it wasn't on the agenda. You said it wasn't on the agenda. Look at your agenda.
Agenda, because you put it...
I did put it on the agenda, because I wanted to address...
You wanted to send it, and make it political again.
I wanted to address a resident's concerns, and that's what we're doing.
That's what you do. You could get that...
I get an email, I get an email every week...
This is political.
I get an email every week from a resident on that street. Now this council has to figure out a solution. That's all I'm saying. So but, next time we meet, I want to hear a solution somewhere.
We will.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Yes.
Mayor, just wanted to know that Councilwoman Park joined the meeting.
Nice of you to join. The meeting started at 7:00, everybody.
Maria Valari, 45, Jane Drive. I, I, I'm so embarrassed sitting over there, I have to tell you. This is, this is like a zoo going on over here with the residents. I've never seen anything like this. I'm sorry?
You're in a photo party, you heard it.
Okay, so...
Sir, you cannot speak from that seat.
Apology, sir.
I didn't hear what you said.
We have so many special meetings. I have never, I mean, what is it, since January? How many have we had? Four or five? How could people come to these things? People have families, and most people don't even know you're having special meetings. What I wanted to speak about was a couple of things. One is, I read an article on NJ.com where it actually listed the facts that you exonerated a man who basically had sexual harassment comments, or other kinds of comments. I don't, I wish I brought the article with me, but I didn't. And what I'm concerned about is that this is going to open up to more lawsuits. I mean, I don't know why you did that so quickly. I don't know why you didn't advise the town. I don't know why you had to rush to judgment, and I don't even know the facts of anything. And I pay taxes in this town, and I deserve to know what you people are giving away, because it's my tax money going into that. Two, you're talking about every, every street that's paved, I mean, every street that was paved, was paved when the builders built those houses. They weren't paved afterwards because people were complaining about their, their streets. I mean, when you, when you build a whole block of houses, I would assume that a road should be built. And you know what, ladies? I don't know whether Ms. O was in fact not representing Mr. Zimotor, but it would be nice if we could get some proof of that. You just said that you were not representing him at the time that he built those houses. I don't know that to be a fact. I, I've noticed that there's a lot of you-know-what going around here, and unfortunately, I can't believe everything that's being said up there. Moral Road, you settled a lawsuit that's going to cost the taxpayers money. Why would you do that? Why would you exonerate an engineering company? They shouldn't know what the heck they're doing when they decide what kind of pipes to put down the road so that people don't get flooded, but you, in your wisdom, have decided that we should settle everything because we don't want to pay legal fees. But you know what? Ultimately, we, the taxpayers, are going to pay to fix Moral Road, to pave the other street. Meanwhile, people get away with things, and I don't particularly like that. Obviously, donors do rate for you people because you've done a lot of favors. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes.
Yeah, laughing at you.
Stop.
How ridiculous you are. She said she was going to wipe the smile off my face.
You shouldn't speak to the residents that way, Councilwoman Park.
What did I say? Don't put words in my mouth. What did you say exactly? Those are words I knew. What did you say exactly?
Put it in the gavel away. You know, stop stopping me. Put it in the gavel away.
You're a...
Use it when you need it.
I do need it, because she is harassing residents.
Do not slam the gavel at me.
You are harassing residents.
I'm not harassing you.
You absolutely are.
Be disrespectful to the council, Mayor.
I'm being very respectful.
Exactly. I come in two minutes later, that's how you act already. You're ridiculous.
Councilman Aversa, whatever, whatever's troubling you tonight, if you want to take a break and go think about it, you can come back after.
I'm not your kindergarten student.
I'll give you a little time now.
Yeah, I know, really.
Are you well done?
Whenever you're ready.
I've been ready.
Good.
Okay. Ed, you need to stop, okay? I really mean it. You really need to stop. Okay. I've got my own timer. I don't need anybody to time me because you've been mistiming me, and...
Your timer is...
I counted. Excuse me, it's not, it's when I hit the button.
Okay, let's hit the button.
Stop! Do not harass me from that dais. Yes, you are.
No, you're saying that you're lying about your timing.
You are.
Councilwoman Park, please, just stop, Councilwoman Park. Let that resident speak, okay? You can speak.
Carol, let's be real. Everybody knows who Carol is.
Carol is a resident. Ms. McMorris is a resident. If you think that there's a hierarchy in the residents here, you're wrong.
Yeah, you do.
No, because they don't treat me equally, and they know that. And that was just proof of it. Just want to quickly respond on the Fifth Street. As a Realtor, everyone knows when you purchase a property that's not on a paved street, you pay less for it. You pay less for the land, you pay less for the house if it's already built. So don't insult everybody's intelligence by saying that the entire town should pay because a builder benefited by buying a property cheaper, sold it for a profit, and now the people that bought it at the cheaper price are going to benefit at our expenses? I'm really sorry. That's not how real estate works, and I guess you'll have that as an ordinance or for a public meeting at another time. And Ms. O, if you were conflicted and he was a client, then that's, I'm just saying, the reports will show.
All right. I'm sure you're going to dig into it, so...
Well, you already recused and admitted you accidentally did vote. I'm not going to waste my time on it. You did have a conflict, and you do have an ethics problem on that.
Okay.
Number one. Number two, I still haven't received a response from the email I sent you. It's been a month. I really would require a check back. I'll reforward it again, but it's been a month. Mr. Wunsch, at the January 24th special meeting, was a special meeting, and there were no resolutions on the agenda. Yet, when you came out of close, there were like seven resolutions that were added that the Borough Clerk already had copies and then handed those out. Who prepared those resolutions?
I don't remember.
Well, there were seven resolutions. Did you prepare them?
I've got to go into them individually. What are they?
Settlements for Boswell, settlement for the chief situation, settlement for PBA.
Got to be a little more specific.
Did you prepare the resolutions for the January 24th meeting?
I don't recall, and you have to be specific.
I am. Mayor, you are here. Did the Administrator prepare? I have a right to ask the question. They came in with prepared resolutions.
Yes, I didn't receive those until the meeting either.
Ms. Duffy, did you prepare those resolutions?
Without seeing them, I can't answer.
Okay. You know what? I'll wait till our next meeting, and then I'll ask you again if you could take a look at that, because I just want to know who prepared the resolution.
Yeah, we seem to have a...
As a taxpayer, I have a right to know.
What was it dated?
January 24th. You know, that was when we were in closed session for three hours and you settled with the chief situation. You know, I'm sure that was a memorable meeting for everybody. Number one. Number two, the situation with the tapes that are being withheld by the Borough, that you're in litigation with James Tracy, and you're in litigation with me over Oprah requests that aren't being handled, in my opinion, properly.
Yeah, and, and...
And you're going to have, and you're going to be having more litigation if that behavior continues, because you can't violate the law. You can't violate the law. And presently, I am of the opinion that you are violating the law. So judge will decide at the end of the day. I look forward to that, but in, in reading the responses, I am noticing disparate treatment by the Clerk's office to some residents and others. I also have had the privilege of listening to certain tapes as a named defendant in the Chaffey case, and I know that Ms. O has, and everybody on this council says they have. And I just don't understand how Ms. Duffy is sitting here as an acting administrator, when you listened to what was on those tapes, when you listened to how she spoke so horribly about myself as the council president, about the mayor, and about other situations. An employee should never be disparaging an elected official like that to other employees. It's disgusting. You think that's funny, Council President O?
I'm just... You're just saying the mayor is...
No, I'm talking about this situ... I don't, I don't talk to the mayor. I'm, I'm asking you to the council.
No, I'm not happy about that. I'm not happy.
Okay? Don't interrupt my time, please. Thank you. Okay. I would like to understand how this council is allowing the Administrator to be sitting as the Administrator. You didn't put an RFQ out, you didn't put an advertisement out, you just appointed her. I know she's your political supporter, we all know that, but you didn't advertise, you didn't, you didn't interview anybody else, and she's on tapes saying very disparaging things, very disparaging things, about certain members that were sitting on that council. How is that okay with you, that an employee was disparaging elected officials? Was it because we were Republicans? Is that why she was allowed to do that? Mr. Sung? Is that why, that, was that okay with you, that she was disparaging elected officials?
Carol, I've got to know what's said personally.
No, I'm asking about what's on the tapes, sir.
You don't have to answer.
He does, he actually does have to answer those questions at some point. Excuse me. Excuse me. You didn't let me finish. Hold on. I'm stopping. You didn't let me finish. You didn't let me finish. He has to...
No, he doesn't.
Don't wave your hand at me. At some point...
What's it waving your hand at you?
At some point, he will answer. At some point.
Thank you.
He will be answering.
Order. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to be heard? No one else? Okay. Can I have a motion to close the public portion?
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
Do you have a, have a motion to go into closed session?
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
Madam Clark, would you please read the appropriate language into the record for us to go into closed session? Thank you.
The mayor and council of Borough of Englewood Cliffs has deemed it necessary to go into closed session to discuss certain confidential matters, whereas the minutes of this closed session will remain confidential as permitted under the Open Public Meetings Act or shall be released when there is no further need for confidentiality as authorized by the Borough Attorney. Now therefore be resolved that the mayor and council of Borough of Englewood Cliffs will go into closed session for the following matters as permitted under the Open Public Meetings Act. 1, 2, and 3 regarding affordable housing, docket number B E R L 611915, 800 Sylvan Avenue versus Borough of Englewood Cliffs, docket number B E R L 6918, 800 Sylvan Avenue versus Planning Board, docket number B E R L 908817. Should the mayor leave?
Yeah. He can leave.
Unbelievable. And number 4, Eastwood versus O'aversa, Parks on Savarian Borough, docket number B E R L 26019.
Did you call for motion, Mayor?
Right. For motion to come out of closed session?
So move.
One favor?
Aye.
Do you have that back?
No.
Can I have that back?
What are you doing on this meeting, please?
It is embarrassing.
Make a motion to...
So, so let's, let's go forward. Can I have a motion to, you want to adjourn, you want to go forward?
Make a motion to pass resolution 1975 overriding Mayor's veto of...
So just a point of discussion, and I had, I had vetoed...
He made a motion, I signed it.
Yeah, so a point of discussion. So there's a, there's a, there's a veto. I had vetoed, I had vetoed the repeal of the ordinance back on February 22nd, and just for the record, I said, "I hereby exercise my power under NJSA 4860-5D, and I hereby veto ordinance number 201902 in its entirety. My reasons are stated here and below. Ordinance number 1902 was reportedly introduced on first reading at the meeting of the mayor and council held on February 1st, 2019. The manner and method of introduction of ordinance number 1902 violated multiple provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. Ordinance number 1902 was reportedly passed on second reading at a regular meeting of the mayor and council held on February 13th, 2019. The manner and method of passage of ordinance number 1902 violated multiple provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. The ordinance, as written, declares that the mayor and council introduced and ordained it. However, no such thing took place, as I objected to its introduction and passages every step, and I did not introduce it. So therefore, it's a fraud on the public. It materially misstates the truth as to its introduction and passage, and it does perpetrate a fraud on the public and the Borough. Ordinance number 1902 is materially adverse to the best interests of the Borough of Englewood Cliffs and demonstrates the usual order of business by the Democratic majority for years before I became mayor. The majority is seeking to repeal the number 2018-18 entitled Public Contracting Reform Ordinance, which is also the no-pay-to-play ordinance in common language, which was duly adopted. My appointees always adhere to the full meaning and spirit of ordinance 1818, and our current planning board continues to do so despite the Democratic majority stating that it is unreasonable. Actually, what is unreasonable is council members O, Sung, Sabari, Ellen Park, and Aversa putting the interests of their supporters ahead of our Borough's interests and those of our citizens. Since January 3, 2019, we have all seen for ourselves the Democrat Council majority led by Gloria O's wanton disregard of applicable laws and rules governing conflicts of interest, which makes ordinance 2018-18 a needed restraint on an otherwise lawless Democratic Council majority. Ordinance 1818, which is my ordinance, creates for the first time prohibition of political contributions to campaigns and elected officials by professionals and vendors... Excuse me, stop talking. ...who are appointed or seeking to be appointed by the Borough of Englewood Cliffs. It establishes that the Borough will not engage in pay-to-play contracts and appointments. The abolition of such contracts is good for taxpayers of the Borough. Instead of amending ordinance number 1818, the current council, newly elected, is attempted, is attempting to repeal an ordinance that the people of Borough support. They are attempting to do so without any proper notice to the public so that they[615.22]
So every homeowner in this town benefits from every street that gets paved, am I not correct?
I don't know if that's correct.
Because then you're telling me what the, what that woman said that came up here...
Who's that woman?
I don't know who she was, a resident.
What's her name?
She's saying that every person that benefits from the street being paved should pay it.
Listen, the council has to solve this problem.
I, I'm solving it. I'm telling you right now.
So take a vote.
We don't need to do it tonight.
Go ahead.
You're telling me this research, you're telling me this whole situation...
Let me do this for tonight.
It is on the agenda, actually. Mr. Bar, it's on the agenda.
Mayor, perhaps, perhaps...
It's on the agenda.
Perhaps, the planning board currently has something in front of them where somebody wants to build. Perhaps that...
I don't know.
...owner could in fact pave that street.
Perhaps, but you're making...
Perhaps. So why don't we just put this on hold?
What are you talking about? Do you know something I don't know?
What are you talking...
First you said it wasn't on the agenda. You said it wasn't on the agenda. Look at your agenda.
Agenda, because you put it...
I did put it on the agenda, because I wanted to address...
Because you wanted to send it and make it political again.
I wanted to address a resident's concerns, and that's what we're doing.
It's political.
I get an email, I get an email every week...
This is political.
I get an email every week from residents on that street. Now this council has to figure out a solution, that's all I'm saying. So but, but next time we meet, I want to hear a solution from you.
We will.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public? Yes.
Mayor, just wanted to thank that Councilwoman Park joining the meeting.
Nice of you to join. Meetings start at seven, everybody.
Maria Valari, 45, Jane Drive. I, I, I'm so embarrassed sitting over there, I have to tell you. This is, this is like a zoo going on over here with the residents. I, I've never seen anything like this. Uh, I'm sorry? Okay, so...
Sir, you cannot speak from that seat.
I apologize, sir.
I didn't hear what you said.
We have so many special meetings. I have never, and I mean, what is it, since January? How many have we had? Four or five? I, how could people come to these things? People have families. Most people don't even know you're having special meetings. What I wanted to speak about was a couple of things. One is, I read an article on NJ.com where it actually listed the facts that you exonerated a man who basically had sexual harassment comments, all other kinds of comments. I don't, I wish I brought the article with me, but I didn't. And what I'm concerned about is that this is going to open up to more lawsuits. I mean, I don't know why you did that so quickly. I don't know why you didn't advise the town. I don't know why you had to rush to judgment, and I don't even know the facts of anything. And I pay taxes in this town, and I deserve to know what you people are giving away, because it's my tax money going into that. Two, you're talking about every, every street that's paved, I mean, every street that was paved, was paved when the builders built those houses. They weren't paved afterwards because people were complaining about their, their streets. I mean, when you, when you build a whole block of houses, I would assume that a road should be built. And you know what, ladies? I don't know whether Ms. O was in fact not representing Mr. Zimotor, but it would be nice if we could get some proof of that. You just said that you were not representing him at the time that he built those houses. I don't know that to be a fact. I, I've noticed that there's a lot of you-know-what going around here, and unfortunately, I can't believe everything that's being said up there. Moral Road, you settled a lawsuit that's going to cost the taxpayers money. Why would you do that? Why would you exonerate an engineering company that shouldn't know what the heck they're doing when they decide what kind of pipes to put down the road so that people don't get flooded, but you, in your wisdom, have decided that we should settle everything because we don't want to pay legal fees? But you know what? Ultimately, we, the taxpayers, are going to pay to fix Moral Road, to pave the other street. Meanwhile, people get away with things, and I don't particularly like that. Obviously, donors do rate for you people because you've done a lot of favors. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes.
Stop. How ridiculous you are. She said she was going to wipe the smile off my face.
You shouldn't speak to the residents that way, Councilwoman Park.
What did you say exactly? Those are words I knew. I said, "Do not..." What did you say exactly?
Put the gavel away. You know, it's not supposed to be the gavel away.
You're a person for all of us.
Use it when you need it.
I do need it, because she is harassing residents.
Do not slam the gavel at me.
You are harassing residents.
I'm not harassing you.
You absolutely are.
Be disrespectful to the council, Mayor.
I'm being very respectful.
No, exactly. I come in two minutes later, that's how you act already. You're ridiculous.
Councilman Aversa, whatever, whatever's troubling you tonight, if you want to take a break and go think about it, you can come back after.
About your kindergarten students, yeah.
I'll give you a little time now.
Yeah, no, really.
Are you well done?
Whenever you're ready.
I've been ready.
Good.
Okay. Ed, you need to stop, okay? I really mean it. You really need to stop. Okay. I've got my own timer. I don't need anybody to time me because you've been mistiming me, and...
Your timing is...
I counted. Excuse me, it's not, it's when I hit the button.
Okay, let's hit the button.
Stop. Do not harass me from that dais. Yes, you are.
No, you're saying that you're lying about your timing.
You are.
Councilwoman Park, please, just stop, Councilwoman Park. Let that resident speak, okay? You can speak up.
Carol, let's be real. Everybody knows who Carol is.
Carol is a resident. Ms. McMorris is a resident. If you think that there's a hierarchy in the residents here, you're wrong.
Yeah, you do.
No, because they don't treat me equally, and they know that. And that was just proof of it. Just want to quickly respond on the Fifth Street. As a Realtor, everyone knows when you purchase a property that's not on a paved street, you pay less for it. You pay less for the land, you pay less for the house if it's already built. So don't insult everybody's intelligence by saying that the entire town should pay because a builder benefited by buying a property cheaper, sold it for a profit, and now the people that bought it at the cheaper price are going to benefit at our expenses? I'm really sorry. That's not how real estate works. And I guess you'll have that at an ordinance or for a public meeting at another time. And Ms. O, if you were conflicted and he was a client, then that's, I'm just saying, the reports will show.
All right. I'm sure you're going to dig into it, so...
Well, you already recused and admitted you accidentally did vote. I'm not going to waste my time on it. You did have a conflict, and you do have an ethics problem on that.
Okay.
Number one. Number two, I still haven't received a response from the email I sent you. It's been a month. I really would require a check back. I'll reforward it again, but it's been a month. Mr. Wunsch, at the January 24th special meeting, it was a special meeting, and there were no resolutions on the agenda, yet when you came out of close, there were like seven resolutions that were added that the borough clerk already had copies and then handed those out. Who prepared those resolutions?
I don't remember.
Well, there were seven resolutions. Did you prepare them?
I've got to go into them individually. What are they?
Settlement for Boswell, settlement for the chief situation, settlement for PBA.
Got to be a little more specific.
Did you prepare the resolutions for the January 24th meeting?
I don't recall, and you have to be specific.
I am. Mayor, you are here.
You can just get back to her.
Did the administrator prepare? I have a right to ask the question. They came in with prepared resolutions.
Yes, I didn't receive those until the meeting either.
Ms. Duffy, did you prepare those resolutions?
Without seeing them, I can't understand.
Okay. You know what? I'll wait till the next meeting, and then I'll ask you again if you could take a look at that, because I just want to know who prepared the resolution.
Yeah, we seem to have a...
As a taxpayer, I have a right to know.
What was the date?
January 24th. You know, that was when we were in closed session for three hours and you settled with the chief's situation. You know, I'm sure that was a memorable meeting for everybody. Number one. Number two, the situation with the tapes that are being withheld by the borough, that you're in litigation with James Tracy, and you're in litigation with me over Oprah requests that are being handled, in my opinion, properly.
Yeah, and, and...
And you're going to have, and you're going to be having more litigation if that behavior continues, because you can't violate the law. You can't violate the law. And presently, I am of the opinion that you are violating the law. So judge will decide at the end of the day. I look forward to that. But in, in reading the responses, I am noticing disparate treatment by the clerk's office to some residents and others. I also have had the privilege of listening to certain tapes as a named defendant in the Chaffey case, and I know that Ms. O has, and everybody on this council says they have. And I just don't understand how Ms. Duffy is sitting here as an acting administrator, when you listened to what was on those tapes, when you listened to how she spoke so horribly about myself as the council president, about the mayor, and about other situations. An employee should never be disparaging an elected official like that to other employees. It's disgusting. You think that's funny, Council President O?
I'm just... You're just in the marriage.
No, I'm talking about this situ... I don't, I don't talk to the mayor. I'm, I'm asking you to the council.
No, I'm not happy about that. I'm not happy.
Okay? Don't interrupt my time, please. Thank you. Okay. I would like to understand how this council is allowing the administrator to be sitting as the administrator. You didn't put an RFQ out, you didn't put an advertisement out, you just appointed... I know she's your political supporter, we all know that, but you didn't advertise, you didn't, you didn't interview anybody else, and she's on tape saying very disparaging things, very disparaging things, about certain members that were sitting on that council. How is that okay with you, that an employee was disparaging elected officials? Was it because we were Republicans? Is that why she was allowed to do that? Mr. Song? Is that why? Was that okay with you, that she was disparaging elected officials?
Carol, I've got to go with that personally.
No, I'm asking about what's on the tapes, sir.
You don't have to answer that.
He does, he actually does have to answer those questions at some point. Excuse me. Excuse me. You didn't let me finish. Hold on. I'm stopping. You didn't let me finish. You didn't let me finish. He has to...
No, he doesn't.
Don't wave your hand at me. At some point, at some point, at some point, he will answer. At some point, he will be answering.
Order. Is there anyone else in the public who wishes to be heard? No one else? Okay. Can I have a motion to close the public portion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you have a, have a motion to go into closed session?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, would you please read the appropriate language into the record for us to go into closed session? Thank you.
The mayor and council of the borough of Englewood Cliffs has deemed it necessary to go into closed session to discuss certain confidential matters, whereas the minutes of this closed session will remain confidential as permitted under the Open Public Meetings Act or shall be released when there is no further need for confidentiality as authorized by the borough attorney. Now therefore be resolved that the mayor and council of the borough of Englewood Cliffs will go into closed session for the following matters as permitted under the Open Public Meetings Act. One, two, and three regarding affordable housing, docket number B E R L six one one nine one five, eight hundred Sylvan Avenue versus borough of Englewood Cliffs, docket number B E R L six nine dash one eight, eight hundred Sylvan Avenue versus Planning Board, docket number B E R L nine zero eight eight one seven. Should the mayor leave?
Yeah. He can leave.
Unbelievable. I had number four, Eastwood versus Ova versus Parks on Sabari and Borough, docket number B E R L two six zero one nine.
Did you call for motion?
Thank you.
Right. For a motion to come out of closed session?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Give that back. Can I have that back?
What are you going on? We're going to have this meeting, please.
It is embarrassing.
Make a motion to...
So, so let's, let's go forward. Can I motion to adjourn? You want to go forward?
Make a motion to pass resolution nineteen seventy-five overriding mayor's veto of...
So just a point of discussion on that. I had, I had vetoed...
He had a motion I sent him.
Yeah, so a point of discussion. So there's a, there's a, there's a veto. I had vetoed, I had vetoed the repeal of the ordinance back on February 22nd, and just for the record, I said I hereby exercise my power under NJSA forty-eight sixty-dash-five D, and I hereby veto ordinance number two thousand nineteen zero-two in its entirety. My reasons are stated here and below. Ordinance number nineteen oh-two was reportedly introduced on first reading at the meeting of the mayor and council held on February 1st, two thousand nineteen. The manner and method of introduction of ordinance number nineteen oh-two violated multiple provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. Ordinance number nineteen oh-two was reportedly passed on second reading at a regular meeting of the mayor and council held on February 13th, two thousand nineteen. The manner and method of passage of ordinance number nineteen oh-two violated multiple provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. The ordinance, as written, declares that the mayor and council introduced and ordained it. However, no such thing took place, as I objected to its introduction and passages every step, and I did not introduce it. So therefore, it's a fraud on the public. It materially misstates the truth as to its introduction and passage, and it does perpetrate a fraud on the public and the borough. Ordinance number nineteen oh-two is materially adverse to the best interests of the borough of Englewood Cliffs and demonstrates the usual order of business by the Democratic majority for years before I became mayor. The majority is seeking to repeal the number two thousand eighteen dash eighteen entitled Public Contracting Reform Ordinance, which is also the No Pay to Play Ordinance in common language, which was duly adopted. My appointees always adhere to the full meaning and spirit of ordinance eighteen eighteen, and our current planning board continues to do so despite the Democratic majority stating that it is unreasonable. Actually, what is unreasonable is council members O, Song, Sabari, Allen, Park, and Aversa putting the interests of their supporters ahead of our borough's interests and those of our citizens. Since January 3rd, two thousand nineteen, we have all seen for ourselves that Democrat Council majority led by Gloria O's want and disregard of applicable laws and rules governing conflicts of interest, which makes ordinance two thousand eighteen dash eighteen a needed restraint on an otherwise lawless Democratic Council majority. Ordinance eighteen eighteen, which is my ordinance, creates for the first time prohibition of political contributions to campaigns and elected officials by professionals and vendors... Excuse me, stop talking. ...who are appointed or seeking to be appointed by the borough of Englewood Cliffs. It establishes that the borough will not engage in pay-to-play contracts and appointments. The abolition of such contracts is good for taxpayers of the borough. Instead of amending ordinance number eighteen eighteen, the current council, newly elected, is attempted, is attempting to repeal an ordinance that the people of borough support. They are attempting to do so without any proper notice to the public so that they can reward the many political cronies who contribute to their campaigns without regard to the best interests of the borough. So I had vetoed the nineteen dash oh-two, and I understand tonight they still want to override that veto. However, it's still incorrect, because I never introduced the first ordinance in the first place. So if they want to override, what they really should do is reintroduce and make it clear.
Yeah, that's not...
Are you serious?
Let's take the vote.
Well, I encourage the public...
Let's take the vote.
I do encourage the public to, you know, deal with this.
We encourage it.
There's also typos in the resolution that I'm reading. There's typos. So if you want to use English, use English. If you want to use something different, go ahead.
Ballpointers, this is common.
Yep. Councilman Wu is absent. Councilperson Song?
Yes.
Sabari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Resolution nineteen...
Okay, so just for the record, I did not introduce that, although it says that I did. Okay?[1633.22]